Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Dan Self, American Legion Post 153.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we are so grateful for the amazing liberties and blessings that were given in this country that we live in and the privilege we have of being a part of this community. We pray for your spirit to be in this room this evening. We give thanks for those who have offered themselves and their time and energy to help make this a better community and a better place to live. We pray for your wisdom to be about the discernment of the important items that are before us, that we might be able to lead and to create a better community for our families and for our children and for generations to come after us. We pray for your blessing upon this time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
If anyone has hit your own, please remove it. We will recite the pledge of allegiance. Please place the flag, place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Feld.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh.
Here.
Mayor DeGerris.
Here.
We have seven presidents.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any members of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a possible conflict of interest regarding workshop item C.
Okay, and I have a possible conflict on item E. If Mayor Pro Tim McVeigh will take care of that when it comes time?
Sure.
None others? Citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Give your name and address, sir.
Yes, my name is David Davis at 825 Hart Street here in Papa Bluff, Missouri. Been here for 15 years. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Massingham, the city council, I want to bring up to the attention of city council members of the city cemetery. I've had problems with that for quite some time now. And previous, I reported to the police department around the 25th of May of some scratches on my headstone. There's five markers out there with my name on them with headstones on them. So my input is if we can't have any more consideration for the headstone, then let some of the public mow the grass, please. I mean, I've got a picture that I can show members and a scratch on it that I buffed out with buffing compound, but Mr. Kirby couldn't see it. So the police department can see it, I can see it, it is on camera. So any other input or would anybody like to see a picture of it?
What kind of scratches? Are they from, from mowing it?
Yes. They went off the top of the headstone.
Okay. Well, it went dark.
Yeah, it went dark. Okay. You see it?
Just sitting on the ground.
Yes.
It's a flat stone?
It's a flat stone. But it first started out with my mother headstone when I buried her. There has been grass over it periods of times, as I mentioned to Mr. Mayor here. So...
Can we see it also?
Yes. Go dark again.
No.
Okay.
I see two scratches.
As I reported to Mr. Kirby, I said there is scratches on the stone and he went out there visualizing, he couldn't see it. So anyway, as I was saying, that if we can't get the city cemetery to take better care of it and be considerate, then there's five stones out there that I would like to take care of myself personally, if I may. So thank you and give me the comments later. Mr. Mayor can call me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's none other. Mr. Fox, would you come up to the podium?
You're troubling me. I thought you were getting that to City Lieutenant. This is a plaque from MISO, which stands for the Missouri Electrical Systems of Oklahoma Incorporated. And I got this in the mail last week and it says, "It is with great pleasure that I inform you that the city of Papa Bluff, Papa Bluff Electric, is a 2016 recipient of the municipal electric system of Oklahoma, MISO, Charlie Burgett Electric Reliability Award. Papa Bluff is being recognized for outstanding achievement in MISO's four-state region, Oklahoma, Missouri, Arkansas, and Kansas, with an average system availability index of 99.9947 percent." The city's electric department is recognized for outstanding achievement in the Association Annual Electric Operations and Reliability Competition. Utility competes in cities over 10,000 in population category and was cited for achieving one of the highest reported level of service reliability for cities within the region. Papa Bluff Electric experienced an average system availability index of 99.9947 percent in 2016. The department identified, responded to, and corrected a power outage problem in less than one hour on average by having local ownership of the electric system and crews located within two miles of most customers. Customers don't wait for electric service crews in Papa Bluff. Thought that was a great award and wanted to thank Bill for the great job he does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director DeGerrica Fox will appear before the city council to request approval for the discharge of fireworks in the city limits on July 4, 2017.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here on behalf of Downtown Papa Bluff. Briggs and Stratton has graciously donated the fireworks display for our community again this year, and I thank them for that. So I'm here this evening to request approval for the discharge of fireworks again in Ray Clinton Park.
I believe this just called for verbal approval.
Sounds good.
I agree.
They put on pretty good display, and it cost us absolutely nothing.
All for it. Good deal.
Yes. While I'm here, I ask for permission just to give an update on downtown, a dog park update. We're still working on the Purina grant. We're working with Mid-Continent Nail and Wire on a fencing donation, which we're very thankful for. The farmer's market is now open and available to our vendors Monday through Friday now, with market day being on Saturday. And the first Saturday of each month is our flea market day. So any and all vendors are welcome on that day, not just produce, crafts, and value-added items. We'll be hosting a turnaround downtown that will be held by Missouri Main Street Connection out of Branson, Missouri. This will be an informative meeting held for downtown property owners, business owners, county, city officials, and anyone in the community that's interested in helping revitalize downtown. It will be June 29 at 6:00 PM at the Black River Coliseum. I will be giving invitations to each of you and mailing them out to the community as well. And I invite all of you to our downtown 5K, which will be held July 1, and our parade this year, which will be sponsored by Fox Radio, July 4. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Moving on to item B, the city council review request from the planning and zoning commission to rezone property from RS3 Central Area Residential to RA2 Residential Apartment, and to approve a conditional use permit to operate a faith-based, not-for-profit women's housing program located at 704 and 708 Kinzer Street. The applicant is Recycling Grace Ministries, care of Sandra Mick, 601 Apple Street, Papa Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, Recycling Grace Ministries represented by Reverend Sandy Mick, Sandra Mick. I've known her so long, I call her Sandy. She is the property owner and the representation on this issue. They have been donating some property at 7th and Kinzer, basically 704 and 708 Kinzer, and they wish to utilize it as part of their recycling grace program that they already have in place on Apple Street farther north in town. And it is to operate a faith-based, not-for-profit women's housing center. It'll be another stage of their program, as I understand it, as it went through planning and zoning. Existing use is RS, existing zoning is RS3 Central Area Residential, and the existing land use is non-conforming apartment use and a single-family house at one of the addresses. The location is 704, which is where the house is, and 708 Kinzer, which is an apartment building. They were under one ownership and they were donated to the Recycling Grace Group. Surrounding land use, to the north, south, and west is RS3 Central Area Residential. To the east across 7th Street is already zoned RA2 Residential Apartment. So it would be contiguous to zoning if it were to be rezoned. Utilities are available to the site. At this point, I believe the buildings are empty. Access for 704 Kinzer is from North 7th Street, and access to 708 Kinzer is from the back in the alleyway. They do have off-street parking at both of these structures. Police and fire protection is available, with Fire Station Number One being the first responder. Even though this property lies in an RS3 single-family residential district, which has a fair amount of a single-family residential, there are several single-family rentals and non-conforming apartment units in this block of the neighborhood. It is adjacent to the east to RA2 zoning. The structures at 704 and 708 had been actively used as rentals, and they were under a non-conforming use when rezoning took place in 1992. The conditional use permit for a faith-based, not-for-profit women's housing program adds security to the neighborhood because of the screening process to live in these buildings, and the proposed use should not have a negative impact on the surrounding properties. It went through planning and zoning without any concerns. There were some examinations. There were people that came in support of it. And the staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request and conditional use permit with the following stipulation: That the conditional use permit would go with this operator. If a new operator were to take over, a new conditional use permit would have to be requested and approved to continue the use as it is intended. Mrs. Mick is here tonight, and so any questions that she might have that I might not be able to answer, I'm sure she would respond to. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
I think it's a great idea. She's already got one, like you said, on Apple Street, and it seems to be doing quite well, and I think this would add to that neighborhood up there. I think it's good. I support it.
Several of the ladies came to planning and zoning that had graduated from that, and just them up there speaking, I mean, it'd tug at your heartstrings. See what good job she's doing with these ladies.
Make a motion to move this to the voting session on June 19.
Second. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C. The city council review request from Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to sell liquor by the drink, and to approve a conditional use permit for beverage blending and/or bottling at a proposed restaurant located at 506 Vine Street and located within a C3 Central Area Commercial Zone District. The applicant is Bronze Owl Brewing, care of Travis Taylor, 2023 Snyder Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Avery?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Bronze Owl Brewing, represented by Travis Taylor, is the applicant. Mr. Taylor is in the audience tonight. To have a restaurant with liquor by the drink, it requires a conditional use permit in the city of Papa Bluff, and they are requesting that, and also a permit for beverage blending and/or bottling at a proposed restaurant. This was the former Frontier Restaurant on Vine Street, just west of 5th Street. At this time, it's vacant. Existing zoning is C3 Central Area Commercial. To the north, south, east, to the north, south, and west, the property is zoned C3 Central Area Commercial. I may have misstated that. To the east, it is CX3, mixed-use commercial. Comprehensive plan calls for adaptive reuse and mixed-use commercial and residential in this vicinity. The site is mostly covered by the building and slopes to the east. Access is from Vine Street. There is no off-street parking. Off-street parking is not required in C3 districts. Police and fire protection is available, with Fire Station Number One being the first responder. This property is located at the edge of the downtown commercial district. Restoration and reuse of this building as an upscale restaurant fits well into the plan for downtown revitalization. Limited parking is available on-street, and off-street parking would be available at the downtown city parking lot to the northeast of this property. That parking lot would be at the intersections of Pine, Vine, and 5th Streets. And that parking lot is available to anybody within the city because it's owned by the city. The proposed business hours would be Monday through Saturday, and they plan to employ up to six people. It went through planning and zoning without any issues. There were some questions, but they were well explained by the applicant, so there weren't any problems when it went through the planning and zoning process. I do recommend approval of this request for a conditional use permit with the following stipulation: That the conditional use permit would go with the business owner. If the business sells, the new owner would have to apply for a conditional use permit to continue the use of alcohol sales and bottling at this location. Any questions for me? As I stated, Mr. Taylor is here tonight if you have questions specific to the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody has any questions? Then entertain a motion and a second. Move this to the voting session. It will be held June 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council review a proposed ordinance authorizing issuance of tax increment refunding revenue bonds, Eight Points Redevelopment Project, Area 2, Series 2017, and authorizing and approving certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Back in 2015, we did approximately $15 million in bonds for the Eight Point, which was the first part of the development. This is Area 2, which is the new buildings that are going up now. As you can see, there are quite a bit going on out there. Mr. Jeff Otto with the Eight Points Development is here to kind of update you on the project. We also have Shannon Creighton from our bond counsel from Gilmore Bell. So if you have any questions about the Tiff Bonds, either one of those should be able to answer your questions. So Jeff, if you'd like to get up and...
Good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Otto. I'm with Eight Points Development. I recognize a lot of faces, but there are a lot of new faces. And I think I've been coming down to Papa Bluff for maybe five, six, seven years now. And this is probably the most exciting time to be coming down to Papa Bluff to see all the exciting things that are happening. I want to just give you an update as to, you know, what will be opening in the very near future. I think a little bit of a preview of that has been made by our pylon signs that have been modified to accommodate some additional tenants. But we're very excited. The very first tenant to open will be Academy Sports. They're opening on July, a soft opening on July 3. And following behind will then be a number of tenants all opening right around the same time. We have Shoe Carnival, Ross Dress for Less, Dollar Tree, Five Below, and then Pet Smart will be opening maybe a month or two behind those. Pet Smart's the last in-line under construction. We're just starting foundations. We've just started on our outlot building where we have a lease with Jimmy John's. And we still have about 6,500 square feet that we're continuing to work on leasing. And in terms of leasing activity, the only other remaining space would be between Shoe Carnival and the Walmart, which we think is a very attractive space, particularly with the traffic generation generated by Walmart, 4,200 square feet. We're still working on leasing. We were just at the shopping center convention in May and met with a few prospects, and we'll see where those go. The other exciting news is last month, we closed on the sale of that outlot to a Mauer family, who are the owners of the, I'm sorry, Rhodes, thank you, Rhodes Convenience Store, which, I'm sorry, I know is very prevalent down in southeast Missouri. They are going to do a Rhodes Convenience Store, gas station, as well as, and they've done this once before, or at least once before, they're partnering up, they're going to be a franchisee of Emo's Pizza. I don't know if anyone's familiar with Emo's, but I'm a big fan of Emo's. And I actually, before coming down today, I looked up, and there are 99 Emo's. Now, I can't guarantee that this will be the 100th Emo, because I'm not sure what other stores are in the works, but it may very well be the 100th Emo. And it will be, have a drive-through, as well as some sit-down eating space, as well as the regular carryout-type service. So I know, I think they're in Cape Girardeau. I think Farmington is actually the furthest south they are, so this would be very new territory for Emo's. Also very new, the Mauer family is also a franchisee in a new concept, I said relatively new. It's been in place for a number of years in Indiana, out of Indianapolis primarily. It's Scotty's Brew House, and that will be a kind of a sports-oriented eating establishment and focusing on a variety of beers. And we're very excited about that. And then lastly, they are also going to develop a Fairfield Inn of approximately 80 rooms. So we closed with them in early May, and we're very excited about that as well. Happy to answer any questions you may have about the developments.
Encourage you to see things move along.
It's very exciting.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this.
It's very satisfying to come down and see the state of construction now, after all these years of planning. So thank you all for your help.
Thank you, sir. No other questions? Then entertain a motion and second. Move this to the voting session. It will be held June 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E.
Okay, item E. The city council will review a recommendation from Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding a collective bargaining agreement between the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 702, and the Water Sewer Departments. Mr. Box?
Yes, Madam Pro Tim, Mayor and Council.
It's been a while.
So the council recalls, a while back, the, when I brought you before, was the recognition of their vote, and we accepted that, and now they've petitioned IBW. And what we went back and did was take the original agreement we had and made the following corrections. We updated their wages to what they're currently receiving. We updated the uniform allowance. We updated the mill allowance. We deleted the union dues. IBW collects their dues differently than Local 148, which they were a member of. And the term of the agreement, of this agreement, would be through the end of this year. With that, there was no other changes. Negotiation starts for the electric department this year, so this is kind of following suit with that. This was discussed at the advisory board. We recommend the approval. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Mr. Box from the council? If not, I entertain a motion to move item E to the council meeting on June 19.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, the city council review recommendations from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board authorizing the mayor to execute a territorial agreement between Municipal Utilities and Ozark Border Electric. Mr. Fox?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the current agreement is set to expire in August of this year. A portion of the advisory board met with a portion of Ozark Border, and both parties have agreed to extend this for five years. Everything stays the same, except we move the current agreement out for five more years. This was discussed at an earlier advisory board and would recommend the approval. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No questions? Then entertain a motion and second. Move this to the voting session. It will be held June 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council review a proposed resolution in support of requesting the corridor from the Arkansas-Missouri state line from Papa Bluff and Dexter, Missouri, to Syaxton, Missouri, to be designated for a future interstate. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A few weeks ago, Highway 67 Commission met, which Mr. Lawson, Tom Lawson's chairman of. They have been working with the city of Syaxton, city of Dexter, several communities in Arkansas, to designate the portion of 60 Highway from Papa Bluff to Syaxton as Interstate 57, and the portion of 67 from Papa Bluff down into Arkansas as Interstate 57, which would make an interstate from Chicago, Illinois, all the way to Dallas, Texas, with Papa Bluff almost smack dab in the middle of it, which I think for Papa Bluff's great news. This is a resolution just saying we support that endeavor, and I don't know how long this will take, but I would recommend that we pass this and say our prayers and hope it works.
Make motion, pass to the voting session.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to action required items. Bill Number 7998, the city council take action on ordinance authorizing Mobility LLC to erect a monopole tower directed behind CVS Pharmacy at 225 Northwest Wood, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for first reading, Bill Number 7998, in caption only.
Second.
Motion, second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
You all moved very quickly on that. Let me get my computer.
Page 99.
If I move too fast on this new computer, it skips back to the beginning. I'll be right there, Mr. Mayor. Trying to get there.
Yeah, that's what I...
An ordinance authorizing Mobileite LLC to erect a monopole tower behind CVS Pharmacy at 225 Northwest Wood in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading, Bill Number 7998, in caption only.
Second.
Motion, second for second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing Mobileite LLC to erect a monopole tower behind CVS Pharmacy at 225 Northwest... at 225 Northwest Wood in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption, a Bill Number 7998.
Sir.
Motion second to adopt Bill 7998. Any questions or comments?
Is there going to be any revenue? Do we get any rent from that pole? We'd asked before, and I wasn't sure if we found anything on that. I mean...
No.
Okay.
No revenue from the city. I'm assuming the CVS will have some revenue from it.
No, actually, it's on our...
It's on our property.
Oh.
Yeah.
There's nothing in the...
In the agreement.
In the agreement for revenue.
The gentleman that was here before wasn't sure, and so I just wondered if we found anything on...
Well, you had some kind of sales tax revenue if any...
We will get the sales tax revenue, that's correct. Yeah. Thank you.
Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill Number 7998 is passed. Resolution Number 1859, the city council will take action on a resolution of support requesting the corridors from the Arkansas-Missouri State Line through Papa Bluff and Dexter, Missouri, to Syxton, Missouri, be designated as a future interstate.
Move for the reading, Resolution Number 1859, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
A resolution requesting that highway corridors from the Arkansas-Missouri State Line through Papa Bluff and Dexter, Missouri, to Syxton, Missouri, be designated as a future interstate.
Move for... Go ahead.
Move for adoption, Resolution 1859.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Resolution Number 1859. Thank you, Mrs. Lawson, for keeping your husband straight on this and moving forward. The city council, City of Papa Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the Openshooting Meeting Law, Section 610.021.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.9, 1.11, 1.12, 1.13, 1.14, revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, Mrs. Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McVeigh?
Yes.
Mayor DeGarris?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Mr. Massingham?
Just one item. Most of you probably read in the paper, saw it on Facebook, or wherever, that President Trump finally declared Papa Butler County as a disaster area from the flood. So I'll be meeting with the EMA Director Myers in the morning to discuss what we needed to get reimbursed. Most of our expense will be for overtime during the flood, but I don't have a total amount, but we'll be applying for that just as soon as we can, so...
Move to Jared.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're Jared.